Being everybody here at Borough Hall. Good evening, everybody at home. This is the Borough of Allendale Mayor and Council Work and Regular Session Meeting. It is August 17th, 2023, 7:30 PM. Linda, will you please read the Open Public Meetings Act and call the meeting to order?
In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the notice requirements have been satisfied. The meeting dates for the year are confirmed at the annual meetings, are posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and on the Borough website, published in the record within the first 10 days of the new year, and copies are sent to the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger. Notice of this meeting by the August 4th, 2023 sunshine notice was sent to the record, the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger, and has been posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and Borough website. Councilwoman Holman, absent. Councilwoman Lovasolo?
Here.
Councilman O'Connell?
Here.
Councilman O'Toole?
Here.
Councilman Yakarino?
Here.
Councilman Delisio?
Here.
Mayor Wosinski?
Here.
Everybody, please write, leave the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to your republic, Mr. Sanders, and to your God. We do this well, deliver it, and serve this world.
Okay, next we have the approval of minutes for the July 20th combined work session and regular session. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Councilwoman Holman, absent. Councilwoman Lovasolo?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilwoman Yakarino?
Yes.
Councilman Delisio?
I abstain.
Next, we have public comment on anything on the agenda. Anybody who wishes to speak on agenda items only, please come up and state your name and address for the record. Seeing nobody, I will bring it back. And next, we will do agenda review. We have one ordinance today. We have had some turnover in our police department due to retirements, and we wish everybody well. And recently, we hired five new officers. And so then our Borough will effectively be promoting four sergeants at our next meeting or the meeting on the 21st of September. So this ordinance amendment is amended to reflect the new composition of the police department. Next, we have our consent agenda, which is routine items that we will vote on in one vote. Some things to note, we will have another Class 1 law enforcement officer that we're hiring at Northern Highlands. We have a lot of paperwork, actually resolutions for our architects that we're using, Z Plus for our 220 project. And we have our audit approval of the correction corrective action plan for our audit, which was very minor. And we have actually a resolution to enter Bergen County Trust Fund project, which is Bergen County Open Space Grant that we put in for our phase, I think it was three of the playground. And that is pretty much it for our agenda today. So next, we'll go into council reports. Councilman O'Connell?
Thank you, Mayor. First, let me say, Councilman O'Toole, my deepest sympathies about your loss, thanks for you and your family.
Thank you.
For DPW, we have, everyone got Ron's budget info, and he is under or right where he should be for the fiscal year. The DPW will be working on some potholes. They will be working on getting the fields lined for false parts. And unfortunately, they will be working on getting the lake closed next month, unfortunately. But that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilman Delisio?
Thank you, Mayor. I apologize that I was not here last month, so I'll give you my July report also. And Matt, same sentiments, I apologize, you know, feel bad for you and your family, sorry for your loss.
Thank you.
So July, the Land Use Committee, we met on the 13th. We didn't have a full committee, but we did discuss some few items. Mike Breland, a Borough Engineer, he was, he was asked to complete a couple of items he was working on, which I will report that he has. We talked about some language for a code about bamboo, new planting of bamboo, which I've taken the spearheading on, that I said I would take care of that. And we also discussed a few property maintenance issues that Ron Kistner and Mike Lamentola were addressing. So that was July. We had our meeting last week on the 10th for August. Mike Breland, our Borough Engineer, did report that he did complete the two items that he was working on, one of which was a, a design for a resident issue, which is going to Ron Kistner for pricing and contract. Very happy to say about that. I was not able to complete the bamboo language. I was doing some research. I was away for a portion of July into August, so I did not complete that, but I do have some research on the best wording to put in there, so I will take care of that for next month. Also, we talked about some stormwater training and education, which is encouraged and really needed. So we're going to send a notice out to the committee members and also the Land Use Board members to, to do that training on stormwater management. We did talk about the variance relief package that we'd put together to kind of help our applicants and our residents when they come before the Land Use Board with applications, had several comments from the Board members, which I was very appreciative of. The committee discussed it a little further, and we felt that we'd be better off having a separate meeting. Just a couple of committee members will finalize and complete the packet, clean it up, put it all together, and get it out. So that's, that's both months' reports. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much. Councilwoman Lovasolo?
Thank you, Mayor. Matt, we love you and your family, and absolutely adore your father, and we're all so sorry. So yeah, last week was a busy week. I had a bellhouse meeting, I had a green team meeting, we had the Land Use Committee meeting, we had our admin, HR, and finance meeting, and then the separate HR meeting. So busy, busy week.
And you had a tech meeting, too.
A tech meeting?
Now you have word in.
Oh, yes. Yeah, I had a little private tech meeting. I'm like, I'm finally, you know, getting into the century, I think. So I think I'm going to give a bigger report come next month, but we did have a, a smooth completion of our 2022 audit. Actually, Joe has his handy-dandy copy here. I'm sure he was delving into it before the meeting started tonight. I want to thank, as always, Allison. She's just been amazing, our new CFO. You know, you're always sad to see people leave, and we definitely were with Lissa, but it's always amazing when fresh eyes come in and really kind of help streamline things and get us looking at things more deeply, and she's just a complete asset. The whole finance department is in good standing, and I just want to thank everyone in that department and everyone involved for all their help. The green team, as I said, met, and there's some exciting new things. I want to thank John Gill for getting us the space on the Borough website. So postings will be there that residents can turn to to find things they're working on, where they can bring their styrofoam and handy-dandy little helpful hints that John already has put up there, but we're going to kind of throw into the green team space. That's about it.
Excellent. Thank you very much. And O'Toole?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Since we last met, we've had a couple of small meetings to discuss some police and fire department personnel items, things like that. The State Police conducted a routine audit of our police department's handling of confidential data. The, our police department was found to be in 100% compliance in established rules and guidelines.
Excellent.
As facility repairs and upgrades occurred, police headquarters plans for alternate call dispatching are being reworked. One of the critical components of the headquarters infrastructure needs to be replaced soon, and it's going to require a full power down of the building for a few hours. So Chief Dillon and staff are working with Mutual Aid Agency to ensure services to the community are not interrupted during that time. Our risk manager for the Joint Insurance Fund, Jay Montgomery, visited with Chief Dillon to discuss ways to minimize the Department of Town's legal exposure. In his report, the assigned risk manager stated, quote, "The Allendale Police Department utilizes model practices, procedures, and best business practices." Chief Dillon and the members of the police staff are focused on professionalism, officer safety, and the liability issues that challenge the law enforcement community. Well done, Chief. Thank you.
Excellent work.
On October 19th, we will be hosting the Gary Letizia Memorial Blood Drive at the Firehouse from 1:00 to 7:00 PM. My very good friend, Dr. Mal Letizia, founded this in honor of his late father, who was kept alive for an entire year thanks to all the blood that was donated to him.
I'm sorry, what's that date?
October 19th, in the newsletter. So Matt founded this drive as a way to pay it forward. So everyone, please come out and donate. It really does make a huge difference. And side note, it was just announced that Dr. Letizia yesterday has been named the EMS Medical Director of the Year. So I'm going to fly down to New Orleans to be at the ceremony with him. And finally, I'd like to extend my thanks to everyone who are the dais and in the community who reached out and visited and sent condolences when my father died last month. I'd like to thank Allendale Police Department and Chief Dillon for their assistance working with the State Police during his funeral. I think we made quite a spectacle out there, so thank you to everyone.
Just like your dad.
Exactly. He was looking down saying, you know, this is about right.
Councilman Yakarino?
Thank you, Mayor. Of course, Matt, you know, your family, it's always remained in our thoughts, and, you know, we're all here to support each other, and I think that's the great thing about this group, is we're all here for, for you, but for everyone else, too. So I think that's great about this group. A couple of things with regards to facilities. Mayor and I have had two conferences, if you will, this week, just catching up on some matters. We have a lot of busy things planned for this fall. A couple of meetings that are on the books. We scheduled an ASA meeting for the first Tuesday in September, so we'll get ready for the fall sports season, which the DPW, as Ed noted in his report, are getting ready with regard to fall sports. This weekend, we have two events at the lake, finally, back-to-back. We have Willy Wonka on Saturday hosted by the Allendale Volunteer Ambulance Corps, and they have some fun things planned there for families to get out at the lake on Saturday night. Sunday is a fan favorite, Sunday with Sinatra. Jesse will be coming back, who is AKA Frank Sinatra, so we're really excited about that. And again, as I've been noting in previous reports, we're very close to hopefully wrapping up some capital projects for this year, so we're really close to the finish line with regard to getting those projects underway. And other than that, I think we're all set for now. So keep it short and sweet.
All right. We'll do committee reports next. Our clerk, Linda?
I have nothing to report, but I wanted to say, Councilman O'Toole, I'm very sorry to hear.
No, I think you're away. John Gill, Director of Operations?
Right now, just doing some updates to the website.
I mean, I just gave you a new title. Just cut from out. What did you call him? Director of Operations? Her Ron's absent tonight.
And working with PD on some updates on our contacts and stuff like that, so that'll all be ongoing. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Chief Michael Gill.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A short report. Thank you to your, the mayor council for your unit's support of our department. Everyone's very excited to see the department's growth and progress. We have seen an increase in juvenile mischief. Just a reminder to parents, discuss with their children, respect for others, respect for property, especially Borough property. Thank you to our public works for always cleaning up after these unfortunate instances. We had one again today, and DPW was fantastic.
They were in Allendale, kids, though, right?
I certainly hope, I would not expect this from Allendale.
Good, just clarifying that. Is that it? Thank you very much. Borough Attorney, Ray Witt?
Thank you, Mayor. Very briefly, ordinances, resolutions, and miscellaneous items working with the Clerk's Office, some of which are on the agenda or have been alluded to. Seems like this was the, the two weeks for meetings. Had a meeting with our special counsel and our Borough Engineer with respect to open items on the water utility sale, trying to bring as many of those to closure as we can. So we prepared a little bit of a to-do list, so we can put a little pressure on the O L I to try to bring some of that to closure. As Mayor's aware, we also had a meeting of the Public Safety Committee to talk about, or actually, I guess, really with you and to talk about the, the issue of departmental matters, and also met with the chief on some of those departmental matters. And then a separate meeting of the, I guess it's the Water and Sewer Committee on the agreement that we're preparing with Saddle River to update our flow charges with them, and also have an agreement on future repairs. And I think that the updated agreement will be recirculated to the committee tomorrow.
Oh, good.
So I guess we may have another meeting on that one to discuss finalizing that and then getting it over to Saddle River. That's pretty much it.
Excellent. Thank you very much. I will do my mayor's report real quickly. I had the opportunity to tour the Allendale Senior Living in, on Harrington Road in Allendale. It's been there for a while, however, it's been redone, and it's lovely. It's bright and it's cheery, and it's brand new. I met a lot of the residents. They were all in the lobby. It was very cute, welcoming me. So they want to have ribbon cutting, and they invited the mayor council and anybody else from the community who wants to go visit. And also, they're having a Barbie, Barbie Day with the new Barbie theme, which seems to be kind of fun. I had another wedding, so congratulations, Maria and Scott, so that was a lot of fun. We were supposed to be at Orchard Common Park, but the weather did not cooperate, so we ran to the Red Barn, and everything was beautiful. I've been working extensively on a grant. This is the grant for the Community Center. It's fed money, and it is, extensive is an understatement. They probably gave about nine or 10 documents, and I think they probably bet that most people are not going to fill it out. So I got up early a couple mornings and just pounded it through, so it's for $750,000. And I'm not going to say we have it yet until we have it, but I think it's, I, I think we're on a good path to, to potentially get that money. We're already planning for Allendale Day, which is September 23rd, so please mark your calendars. And then finally, 220. We have gone out to bid for our Community Center, which is huge. We've been waiting to do this for quite a long time, so bid documents are due back on the 31st. So hopefully, if all goes well, we'll be able to pick a contractor, and they're going to be starting about a month right after that. For clarification, again, the 70 rental units that you see on the front of 220 are going to be the back of the building. Our Community Center is the front facade of the building. That's why the building looks ugly, and that's why it doesn't have windows, because it's the back of the building. So our Community Center is going to be on the front. They will literally be attached. When you go into the Community Center, one, half of the Community Center is going to be a big space for meeting rooms that will have a divider in the middle and a kitchenette. And then the other side is going to be more of a gym with a kind of a commercial center. We'll have pickleball lines in it as well. It could be used for people to walk around. It could be used for volleyball. The Community Center is for the entire community. There will be no offices there. The Borough offices will remain here. The library will also remain here at 500 West Crescent Ave. It's for the entire community, from toddlers to little kitty programs to our seniors. And just a reminder to everybody, I know it's, you know, nobody likes to see any condos or rentals in, in the communities, but we were very, very lucky. This was a, a long process. We've been working on this since 2000, really 17, when we purchased the property. If we didn't purchase and take a hold of this property, it would have been hundreds of units. The bids that came in were for hundreds of units. We worked really hard. This project was up and down. We almost lost it many times, and we revived it, because if we went out to bid again, it would have been hundreds of units. If it got to the second round of fair share housing, it would have been hundreds of units. So there's no doubt in my mind. So we're super proud of this project. We're super proud to have this Community Center going up. We absolutely need a Community Center. The space that we're sitting in now is the only space that we have for all of our wonderful volunteer groups. Our town in Allendale is made up of a series of multiple, multiple groups, all nonprofits, all volunteers. And we're going to be, we're very, 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 very excited to have a space that they can all kind of go and hang out, and really nicely, that they can have their meetings in instead of in this room and homes and everything else. So with that, I will bring it back to the meeting, and we will introduce the ordinance. So I ask for a motion to introduce ordinance 23-13. This ordinance will be introduced today and passed on first reading, the, and setting September 7th at 7:30 or soon thereafter for the public hearing.
I'll make the motion, Mayor.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Linda, will you please read the ordinance and take our vote call?
Ordinance 23-13. In order to amend, supplement, and revise Chapter 26 entitled, Establishment, Composition, Table of Organization, Chief of Police, Director of Public Safety, Vacancies and Duties of the Borough Code of the Borough of Allendale. Councilwoman Holman, absent. Councilwoman Lovasolo?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Yakarino?
Yes.
Councilman Delisio?
Yes.
So I have a motion on the consent agenda.
So moved, O'Connell.
Second, please.
Second, Delisio.
Councilwoman Lovasolo?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Yakarino?
Abstain on 23, 197, and 200.
Councilman Delisio?
Yes.
Okay, great. Any unfinished, unfinished business? Any new business? Next, we have public comments on any matter. Anybody from the public like to speak on any matter? Come on up. Come on up. Walter, come on up. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Walter, 38 Hamilton. I have two questions.
Sure.
Why is Forrester still closed?
Because PSENG has some delays. From what I understand, they have some delays in materials and weather. I'm not sure 100%, but it's because of delays in the project.
It's ridiculous.
I'm sorry. I know. It's frustrating.
I talked to one, the police officer from Wa-Wa who was sitting there the other day.
Yeah.
He said it may be closed for, for the year.
Oh.
That was his view, Walter.
No, we, we did not hear that at all.
It doesn't matter.
It's not a bridge.
That's, his comment is not relevant. But from my point of view, why that detour exists is pathetic. It's a hell of a ride as a detour also.
Yeah, I appreciate your frustration. It's a very, very important infrastructure improvement. If, if we didn't have it, who knows? You wouldn't, might not have heat in the winter. So it is unfortunate, and we all are, all are experiencing inconveniences from it. So that's all I can say at this point with that.
Am I to understand that PSENG is going to repave all of the roads that have been dug up?
So part of the program, yes, is that they paved where they dug up, correct?
I'll have to see that one.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Walter. Anybody else in the public? Sir, come on up.
Thank you for the time. My name is Joe Delbuno. I live at 62 Chestnut Street in Allendale since 1973. I hope I'm going to make some comments based upon my attorney, who suggested that the, the issues that I have with the area of Chestnut Street, I went and received and requested Oprah information, and today I received them today. And there are some things I'd like this, hopefully, to this, someone on the town council, if not all the people on the town council, get involved with a number of the issues that were not addressed by the, by my request. I don't know all of you. I think Mr. O'Connell, we met maybe two years ago at a meeting.
Two years ago at a meeting downstairs.
And downstairs with the previous police chief, Mr. Griffith, and Mr. Kistner, and some other, other people. I do know you. We have, the police chief has been more than helpful over the years, or this year at least in particular, that with some requests, and certainly last year. In fact, I think he actually did some DPW work, so, which I will address. So number one, first topic was, and as you mentioned, Mayor, rentals are a problem. So at Chestnut Street, we have a 50 Chestnut Street, we have a rental. And there were two items in particular. I'm sorry for my, my glasses. I have an eye condition, but I, I may have to put my glasses up. So number one is that the 150 Chestnut Street, which is a rental, there is a wooden porch that was constructed. People who owned it in the past were the counselors, then the, the, there was a previous council member's family that, that was there, began with an S.
Strouch.
Strouch. You're absolutely correct. And then now it's a rental. Number two is that they have, so anyhow, there was this, so I requested to see whether there was a permit that was granted for this wooden porch. Now, wooden porches are for farm homes, farmhouse, some other particular kinds of construction, but it's usually with either, it's been there for a number of years. They're either old buildings or new constructions, if they're new, if they're part of a, a building that's been approved, building contract. So it still has to be approved, but there are very few wooden porches that are of that dimension on that particular property. So I asked for the permit. The answer was no permit, no records. I asked for the fact that, and this has been inspected, by the way, a number of times. At least I believe that Mr. Lamentola, Lamentola, whatever, who was ever in charge of that, to go there, that there's an illegal driveway. In other words, it's a paved driveway that's been there since 72.
So may I say that some Mr. Lamentola is aware of, of the?
Oh, yes. Yes. Thank you very much for asking. So to the left is a, is gravel, which actually spills onto the street, but it's a gravel road. So not only do they have cars on the driveway, but now on the, on the gravel, on the gravel part, gravel driveway that has not been approved. I can't believe, I don't know of anyone that has a gravel driveway unless it has some kind of curbing and it's been part of the, the, the construction. In fact, we brought this up at that meeting two years ago. Okay, so nothing was done. In the response on, in the response, I'm going to try to keep my voice down. In the response, it says here from Mr. Lamentola, which is dated August 16th, okay, that he's going to go, Anthony and I are going to go over to the property tomorrow, the 17th, to check on the gravel driveway. Now, if I'm in charge of property maintenance, and you have for years, the only time that Mr. O'Connell knew about this is two years ago. But this has not been, that's, this has not been the time, the only time that, that that's been brought up to people in the town council, or a mayor in particular, in particular times, starting with Barra White, who was the previous one. He hasn't done anything. Ari, and then, and now you, and I really don't know you at all. So the point is that these people knew this, he knew about it. How can you look at the property and they receive the fine? Now, a $50 fine for the property maintenance. That was one property maintenance violation. They received a $50 fine. And how do you look at that and not see that there's an illegal driveway there? So that's where my, my concern with that topic is. I think that someone might be able to jump on, on the issue of, of a rental that is not up to code. Baseball, a baseball pitching machine, pitching item man in the backyard, toys all over the place, cars parked diagonally. It's a, it's a disaster. Number two, second topic is the foliage on, on Chestnut Street, which, if I'm embarrassing you, tell me not to say it. Last year, we brought it up, I believe you and maybe Griffith, I'm not sure, all right, went on your own to cut back because the DPW person, I believe it's Ron Kistner, he's in charge of DPW, refuses, refuses to take action on providing a safe path for people that have to use the white lines that are established for pedestrians to walk safely and bike riders. They have to stay on the right of the white line. The foliage blocks it completely. The foliage is over the white line. Mr. Kistner and I were supposed to meet two or three years ago. It's too bad he's not here. Two or three years ago, even it was, I believe it was either before COVID or after, either one. He didn't believe that the property across the railroad tracks was actually Allendale. And I told him, I said, you don't understand. There's a well there that's an Allendale well. I said, you know, you were brought in here because you were supposed to know certain things about town, about property maintenance, whatever. Refused. We had, supposed to have a meeting. He canceled it. He was supposed to find out from someone in town whether it was really Allendale property or not, right across from the Whitney, so it gives you a better understanding. So if you were exiting the Whitney, you look straight across, that's Allendale. And so he refuses to have that done. And so he refuses to have that done. So that was the request. The request was, and I'm willing to give these to you, I'm not, I'm not ashamed of my penmanship or anything like that. Then in his response, in his answer, one of the answers was that there are no work orders. I requested to see if there were work orders. Did he generate DPW work orders to, to workers to go and do these maintenance jobs? I, I assume that that's what you do. You say, here, this is what we're going to do this week or this is what we're going to do this day. Here's a work order. Go paint the lines over here. Go take care of the water problem at this particular area. You know, go on and on. I asked for, and his answer was, there are no work orders. This is done on a periodic basis by the DPW.
And just to correct you though, Ray Frazier was the one that trimmed the foliage he used to once.
I'm sorry.
Lieutenant Griffith and myself have been addressing, you know.
Oh, all right. So I didn't know who actually did it. So I'm giving you credit that you don't deserve.
That's fine.
But you are, but you do respond to the fact that we have communicated and we still talk to one though. And, you know, a very cordial.
So is that the second one? Is there a third one or because?
There's a couple. One or two more and that's it.
All right. Cause there's the three.
I understand it's a three minute and I, I did get carried.
For giving you extra time.
Okay. The, I'll, I'll limit it to one more at least.
Thank you.
And then this is just one that you and I will talk on Friday another time. Striping in Allendale, this road striping, stripes on the, go on the blacktop roads. From Orchard Street, north to Ramsey, you have at least nine crosswalks. At least nine, if not more, going towards Ramsey. From Orchard Street, south to Waldwick, zero. And there are two bus stops on Franklin Turnpike at Chestnut Street and Franklin Turnpike. One going north to people get off. You go from Waldwick North, they, they exit on Franklin Turnpike. Going south, when they're going to go into New York, they, on Chestnut Street, where Chestnut Street and Franklin Turnpike merge at that intersection, there's a bus stop there. They get on and then they go to wherever they have to go. No crosswalk across Franklin Turnpike or at the cross section at Chestnut Street, at the merging of Chestnut Street and Franklin Turnpike. So I asked for the documentation for when two years ago the striping was done on Prospect Street by Crescent. Is that, is that, that's Crescent. What, what, what street is that? By, by ballpark. By the ballpark. What street is that?
That's Allendale.
The ballpark?
Yeah, the West Crescent.
And West Crescent, right. Yeah, Allendale, by the ballpark. So all, that whole area was completely, was being done. At one time I went to the person, I said, well, are you going to be doing the striping on, on Franklin? No, it's not part of the, the list that we had to have done. Now, also I saw maybe other towns. Now, I don't know whether our DPW do, are responsible for doing any striping, but I've seen other DPW towns, their, their peoples do the striping where there has to be safety done. And it was through our, our efforts that the, on the railroad tracks on Chestnut Street, on the right side and the left side, at one time there were no white, there was no white line that we were able to get a, a striping to be done to, to make it safe for people to be on the right side or the left side of the white stripes so they wouldn't get hit by cars. There's a, the, the intersection of Chestnut Street and Franklin Turnpike is an accident waiting to happen. Now, Mayor White, and I'll have to find the, the email, unless it's part of your, your, your envelope, you know, the folder that you have that on Chestnut Street, promised said that there was going to be three intersections that were going to be worked on in, in Allendale, which include the striping. So you could walk from one part of Franklin Turnpike. If you walk along the, you're, to, on the sidewalk, come to the intersection, walk across and then you continue on, but you would be, you would be, have safety of the white and/or yellow striping. And that there was, there were going to be islands that were going to be created to make sure that if someone was caught in the middle, that they could stop and allow the cars that are coming 40 miles an hour over Franklin Turnpike onto 25 miles. You know, everyone puts their brakes on. They don't, they don't go over 25 miles an hour when they, when they come off Franklin Turnpike. They, they, they have, they're very, very conscious about not, you know, going too fast. So when they make that right-hand turn and they go through there, that we need to have it made safer. And the striping would be at least a step in the right direction. I'll come back at another time.
Thank you.
When I'm a little, maybe better organized. But everyone, and final, finally, and everyone has agendas. I don't know whether you've had agendas. I know that there were people, when the Whitney was coming up, Whitney was approved because there were going to be two exits. There were two exits supposed to be on the Whitney. And there were a number of people who are in Park Avenue area in particular, that made sure that it only turned out to be one exit. In fact, Park Avenue, which is a one-way, and is, some people who live in that area are making sure they don't even have a stripe down Park Avenue. Yet Park Avenue is patrolled by the police and they have machines that are up there to tell people to be careful with their, with their speeding. But Park Avenue doesn't even have one stripe.
Okay, okay.
So whether I'm hitting anyone in particular, but it's who you know, to get things done. So I know, I'm hoping that since you know me, that you'll help me out. Thank you very much.
Okay. Anybody else from the public wishing to speak? Not seeing anybody. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All right. Good night, everybody.